Everybody. Time is six thirty P M and I want to call to order the June fifteenth, twenty twenty two Borough Council meeting. Um, that is our call to order. And item two is a pledge of allegiance. Uh, can I have that please led by Mr. McCoy? Thank you. All right. Item three is comments, suggestions, petitions by residents in attendance regarding items that are not on the agenda. Remind anybody that wishes to speak tonight to come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will move on to item four, which is comments by Borough Council and the mayor. And we will start with Mr. McCoy.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, tomorrow is the first Marshall Square Park music in the park. Hope everyone can can make it and hopefully the weather will uh hold out. Should be a good time.
Thank you. Ms. Vaccaro.
I spent this past week meeting with representatives from the university and the bid, and I am very excited about the future of Westchester and the collaboration that we have moving forward. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. McGinnis.
Uh, yes, I just want to thank Borough Council yesterday for passing that responsible contracting ordinance and remind people that the Happening Ward is the third ward. That's where Porch Fest was as well as, so I got you, Mr. Flynn on that one. And then, uh, recently we had the music festival, which was a big success. So, uh, thank you, everyone, for coming out to that.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn.
Greetings from the sweetest ward in the borough. And we are happy to. Just so know when we realign the uh the wards, all of Everheart Park will be in the sixth ward. So I get trees, not people. It's it's a wonderful thing. Uh, two things. I'd like to thank Keith Karowski for a beautiful job on Turk's Head. Uh, the weather really, really cooperated and I did a great job. The uh, he, for once, we applaud him. He's not here. Uh, the se- the second thing is, uh, I'm going to bring attention to, uh, a special store now in in the borough. Uh, thirty-six South High Street. It's called Katie Mack's Floral Design. Now Katie Mack retired and instead of selling her business, she gifted it to um, uh, Chester County Down Syndrome Institute Group. So what happens there is, uh, Katie Mack is now a division of E B S Children's Institute. So a hundred percent of the program, a hundred percent of the proceeds go to programming and support for individuals with special needs. So I strongly, I strongly urge you, if you need to order flowers, uh, it'll be a double fold. You make the people happy that are getting the flowers and you'll be helping the children uh with a special needs learner trade and skill. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen.
I also wanted to talk about um Turk's Head Music Festival. It was wonderful. Uh, it was really nice to sit outside. Uh, it's a great way to end the school year, which is the other thing I wanted to to say was congratulations to students, parents, and teachers um on a successful and challenging school year. Um, I'm sure we're all very excited for the summer and we uh we need the break. So uh, yeah, that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Mary D Baptiste.
I wanted to say three things. First, uh, we had a, as as Brian has said, we had a wonderful Porch Fest. It was the first ever Porch Fest event in the borough of Westchester, and I want to thank the borough and the police department for working so wonderfully with the Westchester Green Team, whose initiative it was. And it was just a privilege to be a part of it. Secondly, I would just say Westchester has lots of wonderful things going on from Turk's Head to to the bid initiative, which will be, I think, uh, June twenty-first, the Fete de Musique, and then, of course, all the movies in the park. Um, it's just wonderful events going throughout Westchester. And third, including wonderful events, there's a lot of Juneteenth events going on this weekend, and I hope you take an opportunity. If you don't know what Juneteenth is, learn a little bit about the country's history and attend some of the wonderful events in Kennet Square and Lincoln University and in the borough of Westchester at the Charles A Melton uh Community Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I got a couple of things. Uh, first, Happy Pride Month to everybody. Um, I, if you noticed, they have the pride flag flying uh in the back of the building. Uh, that was donated by my uh brother-in-law, uh, who is a higher up member in the H R C Human Rights Campaign. Uh, so I want to thank uh Zach Nolan again for that. Um, it's gonna be great to see that every month and uh, you know, just recently, you think things are getting better, but the attacks on the L G B T Q community just continue. So it's really important to uh to show our pride and to show the support for that community. Um, Gay Street is looking great. I've been up there both weekends. It's been open. Um, it's been two, right? Thank you. Uh, it's been amazing. Get up there, support the businesses. Um, I know how popular it is and it's it's just, it's working so well, so I'm really happy about that. Um, yes, summer is here. I have one more day. If you can't tell, I feel like I'm at the, oof, it's tired, but we're almost there. Congrats to all the students, the teachers, parents, and take some time this summer to uh relax and uh, you know, unwind a bit. Um, and then lastly, I want to reiterate what everybody said about the events. Uh, I always had the opportunity to play at Porch Fest, and that was just an incredible event. Uh, I was so impressed with it being the first time we've done it and uh everybody who put that together, it was it was great. I hope that continues. It was just an awesome, awesome day. Uh, and thanks to all the residents who, you know, volunteered their houses and their porches. I mean, it was just so great, uh, you know, such a great community event. Uh, and lastly, Turk's Head, couldn't ask for better weather. Keith, just his team and everybody who was involved just did an incredible job. It was amazing. Me and my kids had such a blast there. My wife was under the weather, unfortunately, but um, so that's it. Okay, thank you. All right. Item five is a presentation of the twenty twenty-one annual report by John O'Brien, who's director of the Westchester Business Improvement District. Actually, I'll see John.
Yeah, Mr. President, uh, he will be here in five minutes. He was delayed. Perhaps maybe we could come back.
Okay, we can come back to that then. Okay. So we're gonna, we're gonna skip five for now. We'll come back to that. And we're gonna move on to item six, which is a present, uh, presentation of the proclamation by Mary Lillian D Baptiste for the Year of Humphrey Marshall. I think I see him in the audience, so. I want to go around these, am I go there or stay up here? Maybe if you're gonna do it, maybe come to the, up to you, whatever you feel more comfortable doing. It's easier to speak because then you just talking to the mic there, you don't have to hold it, the button, you know, so.
He's three hundred years old, so he moves slow. So I haven't seen you for a couple hundred years, and I see you twice in one week. And like I said to everyone that was there at the uh history, Westchester, Chester County History Center, where Humphrey Marshall came and made an appearance, uh, the fortunate thing is today, we are the youngest people in the room. So he's three hundred years old this year, and he's looking pretty darn good.
And I feel good.
You feel good?
I eat well.
I said, yes, October, so, but he's looking pretty good for two, two hundred and ninety-nine and uh, how many months?
Who's counting?
Who's counting? I guess you don't count at that point in time. So this is a proclamation given to Humphrey Marshall in absentia, but he has done so much for Chester County, and so I'd like to share just a little bit with you all uh this proclamation because we have said that this is the Year of Humphrey Marshall. Uh, whereas Humphrey Marshall was born on October tenth, seventeen twenty-two, in Bradford Township, Chester County, the eighth child of Quaker immigrants Abraham and Mary Marshall. And whereas Humphrey was not, not only had an interest in astronomy, meteorology, agricultural, and natural science, he also served his Chester County community as an assessor, treasurer, and a trustee for the general loan office. So guys, we have to amp up our game, right? And whereas, uh, in seventeen eighty-five, he published his Magnus Opus entitled The American Grove. It was the first botanical book produced in America, written by a native-born American about native plants, trees, and shrubs. And whereas, as a public citizen, Humphrey helped to establish the Chester County Arms House and the West Town School. So he was very industrious and very busy. And so what we'd like to end with saying, now therefore be it resolved that I, Lillian D Baptiste, Mayor of the borough of Westchester, do hereby proclaim two thousand and twenty-two as the Year of Humphrey Marshall. Thank you, and thank you, sir.
And thank you, Mayor. Humphrey will be proud. He will be proud, and his spirit is with us, I'm sure. Stay with you. And thank you all for your time.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you very much for that, and special thanks to Malcolm Johnson for for playing the part. We appreciate that. Thank you. Um, very nice. Uh, we're gonna move on because I don't see Mr. O'Brien yet, so we'll keep moving ahead and we'll move on to our discussion item, uh, which is item number seven, um, A, which is approve of bid award to Duraco Brothers for Greenfield Park Stormwater improvements in the amount of one hundred fifty-one thousand, one hundred fifty-five dollars. And I know Mr. McCoy wanted this on discussion because we were waiting for at least one other bid, was it, or multiple?
Uh, the time of the meeting, the bids were being tabulated.
Got it.
We just received them, and then we had some discussion about whether to include one of the alternates. So I think Mr. Metrick is gonna give us a little bit of background.
Great, thanks.
This time, I'm gonna make really sure the buttons pressed down so that this whole conversation about Greenfield Park and Alley makes it on our recording records, which it did not in the Public Works meeting. So my apologies to those of you listening at home or viewing this after the fact. Greenfield Park is located in southeastern part of town. A small, little, little league field park, used mostly for baseball, but it's a great place for uh to do other things and recreate in the park. This was the target, an early um target of stormwater management improvement dating back to the inception of the Stream Protection Fee Program, and the project has changed over time. In the beginning, um, if you go back to look at some of the early records of the Stream Protection Program, it contemplated a series of infiltration trenches along Greenview Alley that would handle the runoff from the apartment building there on the east and some of the rear parking spaces behind the properties that front on East Neald Street. We began then to look at some lower-cost options that we, uh, for stormwater improvement that would yield a similar benefit, and the focus changed uh in the intervening years to the parking lot area that's used for people coming to Greenfield Park. It's used also by residents of the apartment building across the street. And there's actually if, uh, six or seven or eight parking meters for short-term parking in that lot, so it generates a little bit of revenue. And what we came up with, and I'm I'm going through about four and a half years of history there because there was a pandemic in the middle of all this that slowed down um our processes. There was also a grant application through the Chester County Conservation District, so we have a funding partner for this program that we're excited about. So this is why this is a project we're putting a lot of our effort into to get completed because to keep our grant, grantor partners happy, we want to deliver projects and we want to deliver them on target and on budget. So going on to the next slide, if you could, please. I'll go through these a little quicker than I did at the Public Works meeting. This just reiterates a little bit of what I was just talking about, how it took five years really to get to where we are today, which was a bid opening June sixth, twenty twenty-two. So if you go on to the next slide, please, uh, this again reiterates a little bit what I was talking about, but this is also something we liked or preferred about the, I'll call it the um rethought uh Greenfield Park Stormwater Improvement, is that the discharge, the yellow arrow of the new project is going to be downstream of the um, uh, the bridge, this, the uh, right, South Franklin and Linden Street Bridge. So we know we have flooding in that area. We know it's a complex problem, but we 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 thought this was a better option in that regard as well. Moving on to the next slide. This project is going to manage stormwater from the cross-hatched area in the parking lot into two connected rain gardens that will be planted in the parking lot median areas in the mid-island and then on the island that borders Franklin Street. There'll be a pipe put in place to join the overflow from the western parking median into the eastern one, and then it'll discharge into the um, um, I was gonna call it Plumron Goose Creek, um, uh, in the southern end of the parking area. If you go on to the next slide, it it has a cross-section of what a rain garden is, which is, think of it as a sponge. Water from the parking lot areas funnels into this, this zone where we replace and amend the soils to a depth of two to three feet, uh, plants that can tolerate frequent inundation. Um, the, some people think you have to put wet, wet um plants that enjoy, uh, you know, wet conditions. That's really not the case for rain gardens. What you want is a tough plant that can put up with salt, dirt, getting flooded, getting stepped on, and all these things. Um, and we're in the process of improving our maintenance and long-term uh, uh, planning for these sorts of facilities in the borough. I think we can, we can improve upon what we have out there today. As these rain gardens fill up, there is an overflow um in the rain gardens to take off the excess water. So you get a water quality benefit and you get a moderate flooding benefit from these installations. When it rains more than two and a half inches, water's flowing off of the parking lot just like it would if there wasn't any rain gardens. But that only happens, um, uh, there's only a two percent chance in any year of 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 that happening on any day, according to our models. And our models are changing for rainfall. Um, so this isn't going to do much about tropical storms or hurricanes, but it is going to treat your fre- more frequent small uh rain events, and it's going to discharge cleaner water into Goose Creek. So on to the next slide. We opened the bids, and the low bidder for um the project was Duraco Brothers with a base bid of one fifty-one, nine fifty-five. That is the motion that council has before it to award the base bid. We bid the parking lot paving as an alternate and the Greenview Alley paving as an alternate. The project budget, which is not on this slide, is a hundred and thirty thousand, six thirty-five, so we're slightly over budget when you look at just this project. Uh, we're missing our target by um roughly twenty thousand dollars, which is why we are recommending to not go ahead with the, any of the alternates. We want to control costs. Uh, we want to look at this project in a phased approach, maybe look at next year going, looking at some pervious paving options, coming back to council in next year's stream protection, you know, program, capital planning conversations to see if we can do something different than just paving the parking area, but getting some additional uh stormwater benefit there. Um, so that's why we're recommending uh awarding the base bid. These bids are valid for sixty days. Council can award it tonight. It can award it at the July meeting because the bids will still be valid. However, we urge council to act promptly on this one because we have a a decent window to get it done in the summertime when parking pressures aren't as high because student populations are lower in the area. So on to the next slide. Um, this is just a breakdown of the budget. That's, you can see our grant match at the bottom there. So our net uh, uh, net cost uh is reflected there at at sixty-one thousand. So um, are there any questions from council on this project?
Yeah, the, so if we, if we were to award it tonight, did they have like a timeline? Would they try and get it done in in the next few months? Would they, that's something, this, that quick?
We can issue a notice to proceed and probably get them mobilized in, you know, six weeks, something like that.
Yeah. Yeah, because I, and in your opinion, this would help mitigate that flooding that does happen on South Franklin. And it's not gonna take it away, but it'll help.
Correct, and uh, it's an incremental approach to, all of our projects are typically incremental approaches, so we do enough of these over the years. Just to put this in perspective, this one project is only going to account for five percent of our total five-year pollution reduction program obligations through the D E P. So we need to do nineteen more of these.
Gotcha. Yeah, I think, I I think it's, I know it's needed. I live right down on the block from there. So I know it's needed, and um, I know it's a concern for residents, and I, I think there's also, you know, a beautification part of this, too. It'll look better uh with those rain gardens, as long as they're done right. I know the university tried doing one a couple of years ago, and it didn't go so well, like overgrew or something, but hopefully they know what they're doing, so. Uh, do you guys have questions or?
I only have one question. The uh, the one hundred fifty-one thousand dollars, that's basically putting the rain gardens in.
Rain gardens and the, the piping that connects the rain gardens.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, that being said, are we comfortable with uh your recommendations to stick with the the bid that we have on here, the Duraco Brothers, correct?
Yes, it's staff's recommendation, conversations between me, Public Works, and Will Williams, if you have additional stream protection questions, um, that we award the base bid tonight so that we can start the project. And also because awarding the base bid controls our costs. You can see on this slide here, we are reallocating about, call it fifty-one thousand dollars from other stream protection fund projects. Will could fill you in on more of those, those details to meet that total project cost of one eighty-one, which includes, includes our engineering allocation, keeping in mind that two-thirds of the total project costs are being met by a grant with Chester, through Chester County Conservation District.
Okay. Um, there's.
Make a motion to uh, to approve the bid award to Duraco Brothers for Greenfield Park Stormwater Improvements in the amount of one fifty-one, nine fifty-five.
And I will second that motion.
Okay, thank you. Motion is made and seconded to approve uh the bid. Mr. Metrick, would you call the question?
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
And President Stefano?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. That is good news for the fourth ward. Thank you. Um, all right. Uh, we're gonna go back. I see Mr. O'Brien's here. Uh, we're gonna go back to item number five, which is our uh bid, annual bid report from twenty twenty-one.
Uh, thank you for having me, and apologies for being a little late. There was a small family emergency. Everything's okay, but that uh held me up a little bit. So I wanted to kind of go over um our twenty twenty-one annual report and give you some updates on some current things that is happening in downtown Westchester, specifically related to our business community. So while many were hoping that twenty twenty-one would be better than twenty twenty, the challenges of the COVID-nineteen pandemic continue to persist for our businesses throughout twenty twenty-one. Just when we thought things would start to get better, new variants would creep up, uh, this definitely had a large impact on our businesses, um, on their staff. And, but I'm happy to say that despite those challenges and, but because of the hard work of the businesses, a very supportive greater Westchester community, both the residents and those outside of Westchester, because they are a big part of supporting the businesses in downtown Westchester. And I like to thank the hard work of the bid. Our community, I think, came out of this even stronger than when we entered it. So the bid has basically four missions: to attract new businesses and support them when they come into downtown Westchester; to market Westchester as a destination to shop, dine, and eat, I mean, uh, sorry, shop, dine, and explore; to advocate for our businesses to our local, state, and federal governments, as you are well aware, because you hear from me probably more than you want to; um, and then to support the beautification, natural charm of downtown Westchester. So I'm gonna kind of just quickly go over within those four missions, things that was accomplished in twenty twenty-one. So within attracting new businesses, the bid, every month we keep meticulous records of the vacant or the properties that are available for lease in, within our geographic bounds. Obviously, we don't have the entire borough, but within um our mandated area of Westchester. Uh, twenty twenty-one, we saw seventeen new retail and restaurant businesses open, and we had six retail restaurant businesses close. So for us, that's a big feather in our cap that despite all of those challenges, we saw a lot more small businesses begin than closed um in twenty twenty-one. Um, our goal with the business attraction in one of our selling features is to talk about the sense of community, both with the residents and with the business owners themselves. Last night, we hosted a happy hour for our business owners because when we, when I'm pitching a business to come to Westchester, I'm not just selling them on the demographics, the high incomes, the sales. I'm selling them on a sense that people want them to be here. And that's when I talk about the fact of all those challenges that we had in twenty twenty-one and how our businesses were still able to thrive, that's because we have a community here who wants to see them be supported and makes a extra effort to shop local. Uh, so that's something that I will constantly kind of talk about, unlike if you go to a strip mall or one of the big mega malls, as long as they're still alive. X and Square Mall is probably gonna be gone very shortly, where you're just the number. Here in Westchester, people know your name and they want to see you succeed. Um, and then finally, the two other items within attracting business, our vacancy rate went down from nine point five, seven percent in the beginning of twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, down to six percent. Now, that's slightly skewed because that is the total number of available um offices, for instance. So if a multi-office building has one office that, or two offices out of like four or five that are available, that kind of counts towards our vacancy rate just because it's a little hard to mathematically back that out and make those adjustments for all our different businesses or all different properties. Um, but it says that we're going in the right direction. Uh, at the conclusion of May, we had a total of twelve office spaces that are available for lease, five retail spaces, so that's the first floor, um, whether that's restaurant or retail potential space, and one commercial property for sale. Since I came as the Executive Director of the Bid in July of twenty twenty, that is the lowest numbers that we've had across those three categories. Um, so I think that speaks well for the direction at least the business community is going. Next, on attracting customers, we were able to begin to start doing events in twenty twenty-one, probably not at the clip we were hoping to at the beginning of twenty twenty-one. Uh, the pandemic continued to create challenges for us. We were happy to bring back the Gay Street Open Air Market with a collaborative partnership from Borough Council. Um, that was a key to getting that done. I have spoken to numerous restaurateurs and retail establishments that have said that if it were not for the extra efforts that the borough did on allowing, whether it's outdoor dining on Gay Street or even off of Gay Street, they would not have made it through the pandemic. So your efforts did make a huge difference to getting a lot of these businesses on the other side of the storm. We were also, in the fall, we took over the Gallery Walk, which is a self-guided art tour throughout downtown Westchester. This was an event that the Chamber of Commerce used to put on. They decided that they no longer wanted to continue with the event, so we were very glad to pick that up and keep that running. It, there was a total of about eighteen stops. It combines art galleries and retail stores, who will feature a local artist, um, with the goal of both supporting our local artists by hopefully getting them sales, um, and getting exposure for the galleries and the retail stores as well. We also worked um to kind of expand what we do for Small Business Weekend. You might be familiar with Shop Small Saturday, which is a nationwide effort to focus on shopping local for the upcoming holiday season. In Westchester, we try and talk about Small Business Weekend to try and encourage, whether it's on Black Friday, Shop Small Saturday, or the next Sunday, to get more customers out. We worked on getting our businesses totes and giveaways. Um, we did an aggressive marketing campaign because especially for our retailers, that's really where they, you know, they can get into the black, um, is through that one weekend. Um, and thank you to Borough Council for kind of working with us, um, and giving us some vouchers for the parking garages to encourage even more people, because obviously parking is always kind of a perennial issue here in Westchester. because obviously, parking is always kind of a perennial issue here in Westchester, and your ability to help alleviate that really went a long way. Finally, on events, we did Lights Up Holiday Weekends in Westchester in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. So all the extra decorations that you saw, whether it was the string lights on Gay Street, the wrapped garland on Market and High Street, the red bows, those were collaboration between the bid and the chamber. It included us climbing some light poles to hang that stuff, which we were happy to do. And this year coming, we have even more plans to bring more lights and make Westchester even more of a longwood garden-esque destination for folks throughout the holiday season. The other big piece on marketing is we rebuilt downtownwestchester.com. One of our focuses is to transition our marketing efforts from what was a very print-heavy strategy to being more digital, more and more customers, that's where they consume their information. So you have to meet customers where they are. And an effective digital marketing strategy only works if you have somewhere to send the customer. So for us, downtownwestchester.com had not been rebuilt since 2007. So that was a long time ago by anyone's standards, but in website standards, that made it an ancient relic. We're also very proud of our social media reach. We currently have 32,000 followers on Facebook, 14,000 followers on Instagram. In 2021, we had over 92,000 unique visits to downtownwestchester.com. And when you compare our stats to organizations like the King of Prussia Business Improvement District that they have, the Conja Hocken, our social media reach is, has a much greater effect. And especially considering our organization is funded in total about $400,000, and King of Prussia and Conja Hocken are multimillion-dollar organizations. Next, on the advocacy side, I want to thank, you know, those who work in codes, parking, police, Chief Moorhead, Will. I bug the borough employees a lot to help smooth over some issues that the business community is having, and they're always very gracious. So that is a strong partnership. We're glad to maintain and kind of just help facilitate conversations in that area. Thank you to council. We worked on the zoning issue when we were doing the zoning laws. There's a lot around bringing in breweries, wineries, distilleries. We were glad to work with you on kind of, you know, we believe will be a good vision for Westchester going forward. Obviously, educating folks on the plastic bags and straws. I know there's still some, that's an ongoing process, it always will be. But I think it helped that we all came together and had a collaborative process on that, instead of just the top-down approach. Having business have a seat at the table, I think, makes that a more effective way of getting to the end goal of less plastic being used. And then finally, we applied and got some state grants that we were able to put towards our marketing efforts. Want to thank State Senator Carolyn Comida and State Representative Diane Herron for helping us secure those grants. On the beautification of downtown Westchester, in partnership with Mr. Flynn, we met with Judge Vito early in 2021. Judge Vito has decided that instead of, for instance, when I was in college, if I had done something that warranted going in front of Judge Vito, luckily I never did, I would have faced a large fine. She has decided to allow the individuals to work that off by community service. I think the rate is about $13 an hour, essentially. So we use those folks to clean downtown Westchester. We, so if you're ever walking around and you see them in yellow vests, we have them do litter collection on High Street. We go from Chestnut Street, and even though it's not in the bid, we go from Chestnut all the way down to Rosedale, both on, and on Walnut and Matlack as well, because obviously, that is a highly traversed area for the college kids, and that probably gets a little dirtier because of that. Gay Street and Market Street as well. We go well outside the bid to try and make sure that we're keeping the town as a whole clean. On average, we're getting the streets, so including Church, Darlington, New Street, Walnut and Matlack, done at least twice, usually three times a week. We'll have people picking up litter collections. The benches in downtown Westchester are getting washed at least once a week, because one of the important factors for customers coming here is that they see a clean town. That turns people off immediately. I also want to thank Public Works for giving us a second trash collection. We collect so much trash at the bid that our trash cans overflow within two days, so they have been generous enough to kind of help us with that as well. And that also goes, we use them for weeding throughout downtown Westchester, on the sidewalks, in the tree wells, et cetera. Before I get to what's going on in 2022, one key area of the annual report I wanted to point out to you was on page seven. We did a survey of the businesses. We had over 61 individual companies respond to the survey. Of those, 31% were retail, 33% are restaurant, 15% are in the personal care services, so that's salons, barber shops, tattoo parlors. And then 21% are professional services, which are office workers. So we had a good mix for the results. The median number of years in a business or of a business who was a respondent was, had been in Westchester for 9.5 years. 80% of respondents leased their office, and 20% of them own their building outright. In terms of the size of them, 59% of the residents has, are small. They have 0 to 10 employees, 33% have 11 to 50, and only 8% have 50 employees. So most of the businesses in downtown Westchester, when we talk about, they definitely classify as small businesses. We have very few chains in Westchester in the bid. The only chain really is Rite Aid, and outside, just outside of the bid, would really be 7-Eleven. Those are the only two major chains that I can really think of. When we asked them if they feel optimistic about their business's prospect heading into 2022, close to 80% said that they felt optimistic. When we asked them, how are their sales in 2021 compared to 2019? 2019 being more of a normalized year. I was actually a little surprised on this. We had, oh, close to 50% say that they were at least level. So 36% said that they exceeded 2019, which was the largest share. 11.5% said that they were at least level with 2019. And then 29.5% said that they were below 2019, and the rest, the remaining 23, it did not apply. What the biggest challenges for those businesses were, parking has, you know, no surprise to anyone in this room. That is always an issue. But as I explained to both our businesses and to customers coming in here, we're really trying to market the street-level lots that we have, the garages that we have. We are just, just the layout of Westchester, you're really never going to truly improve, you know, the number of spots you have. I'm sure at some point, we'll get to the point where a decked parking garage will need to come into play. It doesn't seem to be that point yet, but we're just not a town that's set up that you're always going to find parking directly in front of the business you want to patronize, or if you're a worker, directly in front of your office. But other than that, supply chain issues and inflation continue to be a problem. Since this survey, that has ramped up incredibly. Restaurants having to take certain items off the menu, because they're just literally too expensive to reasonably expect somebody to purchase. The retail side, trying to manage their inventories for trying to guess when things are going to go up. And, you know, well, the inflationary pressures that other folks are seeing mean that their goods are essentially going to go bad, and they're going to get a loss in their inventory. Marketing and advertising, we do a lot around educating our businesses and connecting them with organizations like SCORE on how to market, especially if you are a business that has been established for many years in Westchester, and you are very reliant on advertising in the newspaper, advertising in some of the local magazines. The digital side has really thrown you for a loop, and we're really trying to do a lot of education with that. We brought on a new marketing events coordinator, not only to help expand our social media reach, but to help teach our businesses how to market themselves. And then finally, continual issue, employee recruitment and wage cost. Especially, I was just reading this morning today, this is the year to be a teenage employee, because the amount of money that you can get and the flexibility that you can get is something that none of us ever experienced when we were that age. So that continually is a problem. And as you can see, 83% of people who are hiring have been raising their wage to try and attract new employees. So looking forward into 2022, we're really trying to ramp up the number of events that we do in downtown Westchester, attract more people in. We had a very successful restaurant week at the end of February, beginning of March. We held our Spring Gallery Walk in May. The weather did not fully cooperate. It was more of a monsoon, but we still, despite that, had pretty good crowds. Our next one will be on Friday, October 7th. We launched Westchester Taps, which is a borough-wide happy hour from 5 to 7 every Wednesday. Selecting or participating locations will have $4 beers, a list of $4 beers, a list of $5 wines, list of $6 cocktails, and some half-off appetizers, a way of just driving business towards a more dead time. The reception has been really extraordinary. Our business, our bars that have been participating, every week since, this is the third week, every week, I feel like I get another bar or restaurant calling me and saying, "Hey, can I jump on this?", because I think they were a little hesitant in the beginning. They've seen it be successful for their neighbors, and they wanted to get in on that. On, I want to also thank you for, I know the road to doing the open air market, this year especially, was quite difficult. We had a lot of conversations about that. So far, the weekend approach does seem to be working. I want to thank Public Works for working hard to get those barriers out, and I haven't heard any major issues. Everything has run pretty smoothly. From what I've been told, all the businesses have pulled their stuff off appropriately, both Friday and Saturday nights, but especially on Sunday, and have the road completely cleared. This Tuesday, the 21st, is going to be, is World Music Day, also known as Fête de la Musique. We are going to have 12 locations throughout downtown Westchester with over 20 different musical acts that will be playing, whether it's at the Courthouse, the Jack Lo Plaza, Close to Bar Avalon, in front of St. Agnes, School in front of Killwinds, even down at Founder's Funeral Home, Gentleman's Jack Tattoo Parlor on East Market Street. We're going to have, and it'll be a eclectic different mix, so please, it'll run from 12 to 9. Stop down, bring your friends, family. Though I will say, most of the music is from 5 to 9, because most of our musicians have a, have other jobs, so evenings just naturally works better. But there will be some acts from 12, from noon until 5 as well. With Gay Street, we're going to be doing a yoga in the street, starting at the end of July for four Saturdays, kind of building on the yoga in the parks theme. We're hoping to do that on East Mar, or East Gay Street, on the 100 block between Walnut and Matlack. 9 a.m. is the hope, and that way, we can, then those customers will hopefully get brunch or visit some of our retail stores afterwards. We, this year, we're trying to do, for First Fridays, we try and do a special event with each First Friday. This past First Friday was extremely successful. We had great weather. Otherwise, we've been kind of, we were, before that, we were 0 for 5 with weather. We had brought in Irish step dancing once, the Easter Bunny one month, an ice sculptor. There was an ice storm when we brought the ice sculptor in, so that kind of killed attendance for that event. So we're, and we're continuing, in the summertime, we're really going to focus on kind of a summer music series. So both in July and August, we're going to have musical acts out front of the old courthouse at Matlack and or Market and High Street. And then finally, we're working, as I mentioned, for the holiday season to bring more decorations into downtown Westchester. And then just real quickly, with the beautifying downtown Westchester, we partnered with the Westchester Green Team, and the bid funded the new Pollinator Garden that is behind the Chestnut Street Garage. If you have not checked that out, they did an amazing job with getting that planted. I've gotten rave reviews about that, and that's a great first touch, because a lot of customers, they come to that garage. We want them to be blown away by Westchester's beauty immediately and not see like just another alleyway. I'm currently working with Congresswoman Houlihan's office to address things at the post office. For those who met with her back in December, their one staff member, John, I just found out he has left the office, and there's a new caseworker, Bernie, so I can get you those contact information, because I know you've been interested in that as well. We also launched a facade grant improvement program and an alleyway beautification grant improvement program. Those grant awards just went out this, this, today, actually. There was, each program is seeded with $5,000 to make maintenance improvements to the front of the building, but we also want to encourage beautification in the alleyways, address some of the smells with the dumpsters, lighting issues, paint, hopefully bring more greenery back there as well. And then finally, for attracting business, our big focus is to try and bring in more retail work, retail stores into downtown Westchester. It is an uphill battle, just because of the market forces that our retail community throughout the country face in terms of online sales. But we do have some. There's going to be a new business, Salty Paws, which is a dog ice cream bar and bakery that is going to be opening up where the Hookah Bar was, across from Kildare's. So for dog lovers, that is going to be a spot I'm sure your, your dog will love. So that's all I have. Thank you for taking the time. If there's any questions that council has, I'm happy to answer anything.
Thank you very much. A very detailed report and a lot of really good information there. And I think some really hopeful information there, too. I was, one of the things that popped out to me was the 30% of businesses that reported that their revenue in 2021 was less.
Yes.
Which is like 20 businesses, based on the amount that filled it out. I'm hopeful that this year, 2022, is already seeing them go in the other direction. I'm very hopeful for that.
Yeah, I'm hopeful, too. Obviously, the inflation issue and supply chains and just people getting spooked. It's just continual messaging from the bid, but also anyone that you talk to about the importance of shopping local.
Yeah. And then the other thing, I'm really hope that we end up getting control of Gay Street, you know.
Yes.
Back from the state. The, you know, talking about winter events, it keeps coming to my mind of having some kind of like an outdoor market in the wintertime, towards the holiday time, having something where gay streets close, you have music. I don't know if the fire chief would like this, but having like fire pits and things. Just some kind of like a, like an outdoor village kind of thing, like a holiday village, would be just amazing. That'd be a great opportunity for it, so.
Countful and Vaccaro and I were just talking about that.
Were you really? Oh, how about that?
Just talking about it yesterday.
Guys, have anything for Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you for everything that you do. It's amazing. Please keep doing it, do more of it. And I'm going to ask for more and more things. I love the fire pits. Let's be careful. But thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was great. Just one quick question about revenue versus expenses.
Yeah.
You have a net, and so what, what happens with the, the net?
So we have a unique situation in terms of our revenue for the 2021 year. As council and Sean as well, where 313 West Markets went off the tax rolls. So that meant, the bid is funded by a three-mil property assessment, so similar to the property tax that the borough collects. Knowing that was coming up, I had approached the commissioners and the chief executive, Bobby Kegel, over at the county about working with us to kind of see if there could be a payment in lieu of taxes. They offered us essentially a, it came out to be a $185,000 grant, which represented a five-year, what their assessment would be over five years. So we'll be slowly drawing that down every year. So that, that is one area that we kind of were wanting to do. And when we originally made our budget, we were also hoping to do more on the event side, on expanding monies for events that we just were not allowed to do because of COVID in 2019. But most of that is really because of that grant.
Thanks. But generally speaking, is it working for a, you know?
Yeah.
Net zero?
Yes. One of the things, our, the way our funding in terms of cash management works, we have the property assessment, we operate on a calendar year, but our property assessment goes out in June. So traditionally, we kind of operated on a very kind of hand-to-mouth for the first six months. So one of my goals was to build up a little bit of a reserve for, so that we, you know, we didn't need to, A, run to the borough immediately in January for your gracious contribution to the bid via the budget. We wanted to be able to kind of wait so that April, May, when you've started to get tax collections yourself, because I know that's been a challenge for the borough as well. So by having a little bit of a reserve, it helps us with the cash management. We don't have to access a line of credit just to do regular marketing functions, put on events, things like that.
Great. Anybody else have anything for the bid? Anybody in the public? All right. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Lilian.
So, thank you. The report was wonderful. What you're doing downtown is wonderful. Just two quick questions. One, when new stores open, if they don't join the chamber, is there any type of fanfare that the bid provides for them? Because I see that two, that my favorite, I've been waiting for, the hot chicken places have opened. But will there be any fanfare? And second, my second question, unrelated. But will there be any fanfare? And second, my second question unrelated to that is, is have you, can you, will you do something about the eyesore called Laurentos?
So funny enough, they were doing work on Laurentos today. They were painting and power washing today. I don't know what his plans are on that. Um, he, from what I've been told, um, and Mike Prohn had filled me in on this, his, there's a whole family drama behind that. Um, and so he doesn't want to lease it. Um, we've, we made overtures. He was the only one. Uh, so every five, when we do the reauthorization for the bid, and we did it in twenty twenty, um, the property owners have an opportunity to object to the reauthorization. Uh, we only got one person who objected to the reauthorization of the bid, and that was for that property because they didn't have any interest in utilizing our services. He, so I have reached out. Um, I can't say we've gotten a lot of conversation back from him. Um, and then, and I'm sorry, and your first question before that was?
So they're working on it, so we don't know if that means anything.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I, I know Codes has visited him. I'm sure they could give you more of an update. I think he wants to make sure he doesn't run afoul of Codes for simple building maintenance issues. Uh, but I know you had another question before that. I'm sorry.
Yes. Does the bid have any type of uh opening ceremony?
So we, I, I am exploring that. Um, we do have a good relationship with the chamber, and I'm trying to work that I don't like steal their thunder necessarily. Um, when, when a new business does open, especially a place like um Fire or Blazing Jays or Turk's Head Coffee, for instance, those are the three newest ones that we have. Um, in addition to meeting with them, uh, we also do paid social media advertising to kind of, kind of help get the word out with them. Uh, we work with um our great daily local reporter, Bill War Two, who's always kind enough to do stories about them. Um, so we are considering doing like a more of a ribbon cutting, um, but I need to massage that, I guess, with, with the chamber. But we will be sure to let you know if we do that.
I saw Turk's Head, but Bill, there was nothing in the paper about the, the hot chicken. The hot chicken. Today?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I did say. I was gonna say I did say.
Ask in the shower, Steve.
Just laid all over it. Which one? Fire?
So Blaze and Jays, um, there was an article done. Um, Fire, they're kind of slow-rolling and their owner, even when I went to talk to him, he kind of wants to get his feet under him. Um, it's been a little crazy. This, he's, I don't believe, he hasn't opened a restaurant. I'm not sure if he has worked in the industry before. He may have. So we're just, wanted to give him a little time to make sure he gets his footing with, you know, kitchen management, to-go orders, all of that good stuff. I haven't got to try that one yet, because.
I had the blazing, by the way.
It was very good.
Very hot. I went for the blazing glazy.
I, I'm gonna say I went to Fire, and they are very, very kind there. They are
Absolutely.
Extremely thoughtful. It is not my favorite food. I already told Mary that, but my children loved it, so it was, it was a win.
Yep.
All right. You guys are making me hungry. Mr. Cook?
Daryl Cook, South One Street. Is there any feedback from the non-Gay Street customers of yours concerning the closure of Gay Street?
I have not. When we did the survey on what the businesses, community wanted to see in terms of the closure of Gay Street, um, where it was close to eighty percent of the businesses wanted to see Gay Street closed, um, there were, that included all of the downtown businesses. We didn't just survey those on Gay Street. I haven't gotten any, since we've shut down on the weekends, any negative responses from businesses, whether they're on Gay Street or on Market Street. Well, I should rephrase that. There are some um on Gay Street who probably wish that we had it more for the full week, um, but I haven't heard any negative blowback. And we do, and I do regularly, not only through email, but go out and talk to them in person to get the good and bad news of what's going on.
Yep. Anything else? All right. I really appreciate it, your time, and thanks so much. All right. We're moving on to item eight, which is our consent agenda.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Great. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Metric, please call the question.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGuinness?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
He had to leave, sorry.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes. Motion passes six-zero. Uh, is there any other business? I have one thing, but ask if anybody else has anything first. Mr. Flynn?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. O'Brien, thank you for reminding me. Uh, about three thirteen West Market Street. Mr. Metric, um, I haven't seen any reports that we collected the over a hundred thousand dollars in tax assessments from the county that the boroughs that they had to pay. And we, I know we gave them a deadline. They had to pay it by a certain date. Do you know if we received that funds?
When I spoke to our finance director last about this issue two or three weeks ago, we had not received funding yet, so we are following up on that. I'll get you the answer.
That's a hundred thousand bucks and more.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh, the, any other business we, I have is that uh council will be meeting for an executive session uh directly following this meeting to uh discuss personnel matters. Uh, we will not be reconvening afterwards, so. Okay, uh, that being said, no other business. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.